Welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher along with B News reporters Chris Flaherty, Tad Stefanak, Veris Conley, Robert Paris, Zach Titus and Carter Ames. Also Juliana Mcgrane with sports and Gretchen Carey with the community calendar. Thank you for joining us. The September Town Meeting kicked off on Monday evening and after almost a four and a half hour session, there's still more on the warrant to discuss. The main focus of the evening was the first of two articles concerning the Burlington High School building project. Article three, a request for about $340 million to cover the project, was highly contested among the body with many speaking for and against the project.
I see this, this money, it's a lot of money, but it's an investment in something that's, you know, state of the art and will be, you know, for many, many years, you know, the standard of, of, you know, what people look at and say, gee, that town has a really nice, you know, a really nice school.
People are concerned about this. This is a big hit for us and I don't want to hear anymore about we're paying less taxes than surrounding towns. I don't give a damn what they're paying in other towns. I only care what I'm paying in this town.
This is our opportunity and if we pass it up, if you're talking about caring about our seniors and caring about spending and caring about people's budgets, I would rather lock in a tax increase of $1,100 a year now than wait five years for the HVAC to go and have to pay twice as much a year? You're kicking the can down the road and you're saying you're worried about spending money. You're going to cost everyone more.
We have spent a lot of money on this town. So we're not, by any stretch of the imagination, we're not ignoring our responsibilities to make sure that this community is well taken care of. So voters you will, but I don't like this project. I just don't think it's the right thing for this community at this time.
I was one of the five people who voted against Fox Hill. And one of the reasons that I voted against Fox Hill was because of concern about prioritization as it related to the capital projects for our district. And during that discussion, so many stated, in no way will this vote impact the way we assess the budgetary concerns related for the high school. So I want to remind those who voted yes for Fox Hill that there was so much affirmation that this would not bias the vote against the high school that serves all of the children in this town.
If you want this to go through, I suggest that we ought to vote no tonight and request a more cost effective option. Nobody in a project team wants to go back and look at the scope of a project. I've managed tons of projects over the years and I've had to be the one to say, great idea. We don't have the money. Come back later. And people have found innovative and creative ways to knock the price down.
Respectfully, y'all have had 50 years to get to this point. We are here now because too much delay has happened. That number is probably $100,000 higher than it would have been 10 years ago. Respectfully, the time for delay is over. We need to move forward.
After hours of debate, the question was moved and Town Moderator Bill Byer elected to go straight to a roll call vote. Ultimately, Article three passed with 77 in favor and 29 against. It did require a two thirds vote. However, the body is not done discussing the high school project. When Town Meeting resumes Monday, October 6th, they will vote on Article four, which is to approve the funding for a special town election, townwide election, to vote on a debt exclusion override for the project. Visit our website at bcattv.org for more information regarding Town Meeting and what's left on the warrants. Next year Burlington, along with Bedford, Billricka, Wilmington and Tewksbury will be asked to fund a $1.5 million feasibility study to examine options on how best to upgrade or replace the Shawshin Technical High School. As reported by the Wilmington Apple, these votes will take place at the Spring Town Meetings of each respective town, Burlington's being in May. A feasibility study is a requirement of the MSBA grant process, which Shawshin is in that window. The MSBA deadline for the feasibility study vote is April 28th, 2026, but the school hopes to get a 30 day extension since several of the towns have their town meetings in May. Shawshin Tech Superintendent Tony McIntosh says each town's portion of the feasibility study funding will likely be based on their number of enrolled students. Burlington students make up 14% of enrollment in the 2024-25 season, according to the Shawshin website. 14% ultimately of the project cost will come to Burlington. The Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce's annual Taste of Burlington was held Monday evening at the Burlington Marriott. Let's take a look at all the flavors and festivities with B News reporter Robert Paris.
Hey everyone, I'm Robert Paris. We're down here at the Burlington Marriott for the Taste of Burlington event hosted by the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce. As you see behind me, a lot of people eating great food and having plenty of drinks. Let's go check out the venue and see what's happening.
Good food and great fun were on the menu at the Taste. The Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce showcased a variety of local restaurants and Janelle Anderson and I went around to talk with some of them.
Karma, we are Asian fusion style. So our menu split into two kitchens. We have our sushi bar and then we have our wok and the fry outbacks. We have our traditional Cantonese Chinese meals. We have a full premium sushi menu with very interesting and intricate sushis.
Today we're serving our homemade cornbread muffins with maple butter and our barbecue back ribs.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. We come every single year, get to, you know, try different foods, see different people, see people we haven't seen in a while. So a lot of fun, yeah.
The event was supported by several sponsors, including the Herb Chambers Companies.
Well, the PACC, it's just a wonderful group of people. And quite frankly, they just do so much for the community. Not only do they bring businesses together, but they bring community together and they make nights like this possible. And that's what brings us back year after year.
BACC President Rick Parker couldn't have been happier with the turnout and the solo crowd.
Well, I think Burlington has such a great restaurant scene here and people see it as maybe just a collection of places serving food. But the truth of the matter is having amenities like the restaurants that we have here really helps to attract companies that come in here and want to give everything to their employees, you know, to have hotels and restaurants and services. Restaurants here play a key part of attracting them and we're thankful that they, they come all together here under one roof for one night.
Over the years, the Taste has grown in popularity, just like the town's restaurant scene.
We have been doing this event in one form or another for the past 20 years. And the amazing part of it is every year that it happens, you start to see how much the game has been elevated and it really speaks a lot to what kind of restaurants are in Burlington. So it's really like an honor and a pleasure to do it. And then it's the hardest thing to do because now we're actually at capacity and the restaurants keep coming. So we love doing this because it's that moment where we get to highlight all the great restaurants in our town, where the business community helps us sponsor it, the chamber gets to highlight its members and the residents actually get to interact with us. It's a win-win all around.
You can catch the full special coming soon right here on Bcat.
Well, what a delicious time here we had at the Taste of Burlington hosted by the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce. From the Burlington Marriott, I'm Robert Paris for B News Weekly.
If you're a foodie, that's an event you don't want to miss for next year. Put it on your calendar. Yesterday Rabbi Susan Abramson of Temple Shalom Ameth organized a vigil in front of the ICE field office in Burlington to mark Yom Kippur, the holiest day of the year in Judaism, with a focus on atonement and repentance. B News reporter Tad Stefanak was in attendance and spoke to Rabbi Abramson.
In the shadow of the ICE field office in Burlington, Rabbi Susan Abramson held a different embodiment of the ICE facility protests in the form of a Yom Kippur vigil.
Yom Kippur is the perfect day to have a Jewish protest here at the ICE office because Yom Kippur is a day when we think about all the sins that we've committed and all the sins that have been committed in society and in our country and the world.
And so Rabbi Abramson had this idea, I think it's brilliant, of coming out of the synagogue and coming into this facility and communicating our solidarity with the people who are in there and talking about why, you know, bringing together stories about, about why.
And Isaiah, the prophet Isaiah, the Haftara portion we read today is all about how our fast on this day and our traditions on this day, our prayers on this day mean nothing if they don't inspire us to go out and to help the oppressed and lift the shackles from those who are in chains. So this is the perfect holiday to have this sort of a standout rally.
You know, we as Jews think about what happens in society when a group of people are labeled the others and unworthy of really care and you can just get rid of them to solve your problems. And we know what that feels like. And so I think it's important. What is it 80 years later, we in America can stand up and say, decisions are being made by our government, but we don't stand with that and we stand with you.
I decided to do this on my own and I asked Ben Silver, a cantorial soloist, if he would join me and he happily said yes.
I've looked at love from both sides now.
I had absolutely no idea if anybody would show up. This was a total shot in the dark. I didn't even know like what the program was until we've kind of been winging it the whole time. But I'm more than thrilled with how many people showed up today from all over, not, not just members of our temple, but members of the Jewish community, members of the non-Jewish community. So I'm thrilled by all the people who wanted to come out and stand up for justice.
From the Yom Kippur vigil outside the ICE field office, I'm B News reporter Tad Stefanak.
Indian Americans for Burlington hosted their annual celebration of Diwali, the Festival of Lights on the Town Common September 21st. Carter Ames and I were there to check out the event. Let's have a look.
On Sunday, September 28th, Indian Americans for Burlington hosted their 11th annual celebration for Diwali, the Festival of Lights on the Town Common. The afternoon was filled with music and dancing. B News anchor Phil Gallagher and I spoke to vendors and community members in attendance.
What is enjoy learning for fun? What is the concept of think for action?
So we have seen like in young generation, like it is very passion to say that I hate math and we are trying to change that attitude, you know, by
All the people hate math too.
Yeah, like K-12, like we are trying to change that, you know. So our objectives are number one, you know, remove the fear of math from the child.
So we have American jewelry, bridal jewelry, we have bracelets, we have rings, adjustable rings, we have pendants, necklaces, and then we are here to celebrate Diwali festival.
Well, tell me about the making of traditional Indian jewelry.
Sure.
Has a lot to do with emeralds, doesn't it? And 16 karat gold?
Yes, 18 karat gold.
18.
18 karat gold and traditional Indian jewelry. So these are cubic zirconia jewelry where each, each stone is being set by four prongs, three or four prong. So it remains over there. So this is not glued. So this is like each is being held by a specific prong over here, which makes it like really, really fine.
The Burlington High School South Asian Students Society was also in attendance contributing to the day's festivities.
So we have a table over there for Rangoli, which is a kind of like a coloring activity. And then we're doing the fashion show over there and we're just like having a good time today. It's pretty good. We do a lot of events to represent different South Asian cultures.
And religions as well. So we're trying to really diversify.
From the Town Common with Phil Gallagher, this is Carter Ames for B News Weekly.
People Helping People's Burlington Feud returned last weekend where teams of Burlingtonians competed in a lighthearted battle of wits for a good cause. Zach Titus has this look.
On September 27th, People Helping People organized a game show style event known as the Burlington Feud. This event had heated competition between members of the town as they answered questions about the place we call home. But how did this event come to be?
The planning is, you know, it takes a couple of months. We have to first rent a hall. We need to get our raffle baskets together, make sure we have enough volunteers, put the ticket sales out and make sure that the whole community knows about it through social media. I love this event because it brings everybody together in the community.
With the organizers of People Helping People running this event for a few years now, we wanted to know their favorite part about putting it all together.
Like, I like to volunteer when I can and it's a great way to do something good, but also be silly at the same time.
When was the last time you got together, had some friends, had some food and actually did some good just by hanging out?
You know, there's nothing you can do better than to support the charities in your own backyard.
Although the intention of Burlington Feud was to have a good time and raise money, what do the organizers hope audiences will take away from the event?
Just to come and have fun and enjoy themselves and maybe learn a little bit more about what People Helping People does and have fun.
This has been Zach Titus with B News.
In other People Helping People news, Julie Lewis has stepped down from her position as pantry manager to start her own bakery business. And her successor Julianne Kelleher is now hot at work. Veris Conley spoke to Kelleher as she began her new position.
After pantry manager Julie Lewis stepped down from her position at the Burlington Food Pantry, People Helping People, Julianne Kelleher was brought in to be Julie's successor and assume her duties under a new title.
Yes. So I've been in my role as operations manager at the pantry for two months now. Originally the position was pantry manager when Julie Lewis was in the position. It's since been reframed as overseeing the day-to-day operations in the pantry itself. I actually have been in nonprofit work for my entire professional career. I ran a summer camp. I've worked with folks who have disabilities and it's kind of nice to take it to the next level as operations manager and be able to work with people.
With Julianne settling into her new role, she expressed some goals that she had for her new position.
I think some of my goals are learning more about the Burlington community itself. So getting to know the different connections in the community, how different organizations connect, different resources that are available is a big step in learning more about where I'm working versus just learning the job. There's a lot more to it than that.
Julianne also wanted to make sure she gave her thanks to those who helped her along the way.
I'd like to thank particularly Julie Lewis for training me in her position and getting all of the information she possibly could in three weeks' span of time to give me all of her knowledge and Jim as well for always helping me out. And it's a, it's a learning curve every single day, but it's fun.
This has been Veris Conley from B News.
Leahy Hospital and Medical Center has received the American Heart Association's Get With the Guidelines Stroke Gold Plus Quality Achievement Award for its commitment to ensuring stroke patients receive the most appropriate treatment according to nationally recognized research-based guidelines, ultimately leading to more lives saved and reduced disability. Susan Moffett Bruce, president of Leahy, says our cardiovascular team is dedicated to providing extraordinary care to all patients. This recognition by the American Heart Association speaks to the high standards of care that we follow at Leahy. Stroke is the number five cause of death and leading cause of disability in the United States. A stroke occurs when a blood vessel that carries oxygen and nutrients to the brain is either blocked by a clot or bursts. When that happens, part of the brain cannot get the blood and oxygen it needs, so brain cells die. Early stroke detection and treatment are key to improving survival, minimizing disability and accelerating recovery times. In the latest entertainment buzz, B News reporter Chris Flaherty speaks to members of the Burlington Players on their recent wins at the 2025 Dash Awards.
Year after year, the Burlington Players have entertained audiences with top-notch theatrical productions. Earlier this year, the Players received high honors at the 2025 Dash Awards.
Dash is an acronym. It stands for Distinguished Award and Special Honors. And it's given to us from our larger group of community theaters, Eastern Massachusetts Association of Community Theaters, which we all call EMACT. And so the Dash Awards are given by EMACT every year. At the end of the season, we all get together at the Monroe Center for the Arts and Lexington Center. It's a huge party and we celebrate all the work that literally hundreds of shows from all these theaters have put together all season long.
Six members of the Players walked home with awards for their work spanning across three productions from the 2024-2025 season, The Book of Will, Kodachrome and Working for Crumbs.
I worked on the costumes for about five months, which is a lot longer than we typically do. But the director asked me to do it well ahead of the auditions. So I had an extra two months just to do research because it's set in a historical time period. I had lots of time to sew and to change, tailor, construct. So it was very fun to do, but it was done over a long period of time.
There was a lot of hard work. The, the award that I won was for special effects. It was a special consult award, which means that they didn't actually have a category for me. And my stage manager, Ben Brotman, he and I shared this award together.
It was, it was an honor. I've never been nominated for anything in terms of work I've done for theater. So this was just such a great recognition of all the work that we put into this. Yeah, it was really nice.
I did not expect to win. I was trying to get a photo of my name up on the nominees list on the big screen and then it was my name and that was awesome. I mean, it was so fun.
The production was Working for Crumbs. I helped do the fight choreography and they gave me an award for dead body choreography. It was great. I've been nominated before as a director a couple of times. So it was actually great to get up there and take a pratfall as I accept the award and kind of show off how doofy I am.
These thespians share their wins with the rest of the Burlington Players, who each of them value for their welcoming and creative environment.
It's home. It's family. It is a group of people coming together to put something together creatively. And to me, that is something that I think these days we need.
I've always found a, found a community and found a home doing theater, back since I started it in high school. So this was just more of the same really. I came into my first show late last year and really vibed with the community and enjoyed being around all these people.
I've been doing this since I was five years old and my mom signed me up for Children's State of Workshop, which is a fantastic program. To be part of this community still, it's enormously rewarding, you know? It's, it's great work. The things that you're doing are, it's so fun and it's so interesting. But the people you get to do it with is the best part. All of my closest friends are from theater.
Until next time, this is Chris Flaherty with your entertainment buzz.
The Red Devil Football Team and the Lady Devils Volleyball Team continue to dominate. Juliana Mcgrane has more on our weekly sports report right after our community calendar with Gretchen Carey.
Hey everyone, I'm Gretchen Carey and this is your community calendar. Beginning on October 12th at 2:00 PM, the Burlington Public Library will be having Scary Movie Sunday. This is a drop-in screening series for adults 18 and over. No registration is required. For a list of the movies, go to the library website. On October 18th, from 7:00 to 9:30 PM, the United Church of Christ will be hosting a coffee house. To reserve your tickets, call the church office at 781-272-4547. On Saturdays in October, the Windmere Family Theater is having their performance of Rumpelstiltskin at the Park Playhouse. For more information and to register, go to the following website. For more community calendar events, go to bcattv.org, burlingtonpubliclibrary.org and burlingtonrecreation.org. I'm Gretchen Carey and that was your community calendar.
Hello everyone, I'm Juliana Mcgrane and welcome back to your weekly Red Devils Sports Report. Let's get right into it. The Red Devils Football Team played their third game of the season against Cambridge in an exciting matchup. Let's check out the highlights.
The Burlington Red Devils took on the Cambridge Ringe and Latin Falcons at home on the evening of September 26th. Senior captain Ryan Brooks got things started in the first quarter with a two-yard touchdown run, followed by a two-point conversion from senior wide receiver Matt Conti, making it eight to nothing. The Burlington defense held strong, keeping the Falcons off the scoreboard for most of the game. Brooks added to the lead with a 66-yard touchdown run. And a conversion by running back Jarrell Penalis put Burlington up 16 to nothing by the end of the first quarter. In the second quarter, the Red Devils converted a crucial fourth and one when sophomore Brian Tagia ran in from three yards out, 22 to nothing. Junior running back Sam Fernandez then added a seven-yard touchdown, bringing the score to 29 to zero at halftime. Fernandez finished it off in the third quarter with a 34-yard touchdown, extending Burlington's lead to 36 to nothing. With the game well at hand, Burlington's second unit took the field. The Falcons managed to score two points on a safety, making the final score 36 to two. Next up, the Red Devils hit the road to face the 3-0 Wilmington Wildcats, a matchup that promises to be an exciting test for both teams.
Bcat was also at the Junior Red Devils Football Game on Wednesday evening. They took on the Belmont Marauders. Here are the highlights.
It was a big night for the Junior Devils Football Team as they faced the undefeated Belmont Marauders. The defense dominated, keeping Belmont out of the end zone all night. On offense, Sean Murphy powered in two touchdowns while Eli Hanifin added another, giving the Devils a final score of 20 to nothing. We caught up with head coach Tim Badenay after the game.
Yeah, yeah, Belmont really tough. We knew coming in they were 3-0. We know they, they have 31 eighth graders and we have eight. So in this league, that's like in high school, if you have a heavy senior team, you're going to be pretty good. They were solid, they were big. I think our kids, it's the first real game we've had all year. So they stepped up huge. The Lady Devils Soccer Team is now six and four after a tough 8-2 loss at home against Belmont on September 30th. The Red Devils Boys Soccer Team have one win, nine losses and one tie after back-to-back shutout defeats, 6-0 to Wakefield on the 26th and 1-0 at Belmont on the 30th. The Burlington Golf Team fell on the road at Melrose 41-30 on September 24th and lost another close match at Wilmington 37-34 on the 30th. The team bounced back on October 1st with a narrow 36-35 home win against Billricka, improving the record to 2-9. We now go to our highlights from senior night for the Lady Devils Field Hockey Team.
It was senior night for girls field hockey as the team honored their eight seniors, including Carly Weber, Paige Mahoney and Lucy Clement. On the field, Carly Weber scored the game's only goal, leading the team to a 1-0 win over Wilmington. We spoke with head coach Amory McNeil after the game.
Keeping the momentum, we have to start games with intensity, ready to win. Can't start them flat. And then when we get that lead, we have to hold it, advance it. We can't settle or slack. We just got to keep that energy up.
Burlington also earned a 3-0 home victory over Stonemont on the 29th with goals from junior Caroline Bean and seniors Carly Weber and Sloan Wilson. The team now has three wins, four losses and two ties. The Lady Devils Volleyball Team nine-game winning streak came to an end with a 3-2 loss to conquer Carlisle on the 30th. The record now stands at nine and two. The Burlington Whuber Girls Swim Team dropped two road meets last week, 87-82 against Reading and 108-62 against Lexington. Still, there was a big highlight. Alex Mahone qualified for sectionals in the 100 backstroke. Congratulations, Alex. Burlington is now one in four and will be in Stonemont on October 7th. We'll also be featuring the team in our game of the week on senior day, October 8th against Belmont. Was alive on our YouTube channel at 4:00 PM. The Red Devils Cross Country Team competed in Wilmington on September 30th. The girls fell 34-24 while the boys edged out a 29-28 win. Eighth graders Mariška Kilroy took first place for the girls with a time of 21 minutes and 4 seconds, followed by Shaylen Fitzgerald in third at 21 minutes and 44 seconds. For the boys, senior Roy Kinyake placed first with a time of 16 minutes and 36 seconds. The girls are still searching for their first win, dropping a 0-3, while the boys are even at 1-1. Both teams will return home on October 7th to take on Watertown. The Burlington Hall of, Burlington High School Athletic Hall of Fame induction ceremony is coming up on, on October 9th. This week, we are taking a final look at the last inductees before the big night.
Gina Kobali Sloan, class of 1991. Sloan played soccer for three seasons from 1988 to 1990. She served as a team captain her senior year and was named a Middlesex League All-Star in both 1989 and 1990. She also played on the basketball team all four years, becoming captain her senior year. That same year, she earned first-team Middlesex League honors, was named a Lowell Sun All-Star and was recognized as Boston Globe Star of the Week. Sloan helped lead her team to middlesex league titles in 1990 and 1991. And she still holds the school record with 13 steals in a single game. She also competed in track for four seasons, tying the school record in the sprint relay and was honored as a Class of 1991 Scholar-Athlete. Thomas W. Mahoney, class of 1985, was a four-year member of the boys basketball team and served as co-captain in 1985. He also played baseball in 1982 and lacrosse for three seasons. From 1983 through 1985, serving as captain his senior year. Mahoney was recognized as a Lowell Sun Player of the Year, a Globe and Herald All-Star and the Burlington Times Union Player of the Year, all in 1985. The 2011-2012 Boys Hockey Team, led by head coach Bob Concepcion and assistants Steve Rowley, Barry Aden, Rowley, Barry Ayden, Bobby Conceicion, and Donald Morgan. The team finished with a record of 18 wins, two ties, and six losses. Captains Steve Montos and Brent Romke helped guide the team to a Middlesex League Freedom Division Championship and Division One state title. The following year, the 2012-2013 Boys Hockey Team returned with the same coaching staff. Captains Joe Berardi, CJ Grinnell, and Derek DeCastro led the team to a 14-6-5 record, cumulating in their second-straight Division One state championship. Congratulations to both teams.
Bcat will be there to cover the entire evening with a feature coming on the following week. That's your weekly Red Devils Sports Report. For more coverage, visit our sports section online and follow us on X at B News Sports. I'm Juliana McRae. Thank you so much, and I'll see you next week.
This week's photo might get you thinking ahead to Thanksgiving. John Sotheby captured this photo of a turkey perched high upon a neighborhood roof, possibly to avoid receiving the wrong invitation to the dinner table. Thanks for the photo, John. Don't forget to send us your photos. The photo could be of something you see around town, on vacation, or even photos of your family members, friends, and pets, whatever you think is interesting and would like to share with us in the community. Send them to Bcat@BcatTV.org with the subject line "Photo of the Week." That's it from the news desk. Next week, we'll have more from town meeting as it continues Monday evening, a word from VHS Athletic Director Sean Hart on his recent award win, and a look at the mural crafted by Beyond Walls in the Northwest Park. That's it. See you next week. Thank you for joining us.